I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, we'll call.
McKnight.
Myers.
Here.
Roja.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, public comment? Glenn?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here with Glenn Todd over on 321 Wallace Street, and I'm here to discuss that ambulance service proposal. Um, we already have a functioning city ambulance with a ninety-eight percent turnover rate with, um, expeditiousness in a critical situation. And I feel that no consideration or attempts with suggested proposals by Meadville Area Ambulance were ever considered. They were simply disposed of. They make no sense in order to establish another repetitive program on the taxpayer's dollar. Um, it's already being provided. Why are we suggesting just replacing it and putting it on the backs of the fire chief? It makes no sense. We're stretched thin. We're in deficit spending. And we're gonna create a program that increases wages, increases operations, it increases the tax bill on less than sixty percent of the population that actually pay. Um, that's really all I have, but thank you very much, and you all have a good time.
Thanks, Glenn. Um, Lindsay?
Hi, I'm Lindsay Melring, and my friends know me as Blue. Um, I don't have much to say today. I just wanted to come and speak on the parks program and say that I am for it and that it is a great program. Um, my kids enjoyed it last summer. Um, they met with this nice gentleman here during one of the outings that he was, um, attending. We just kind of showed up at the park, and then he was there, and he invited them to be able to join a basketball program. It was excellent. Um, so what he's doing with it is fantastic. Um, I saw that there was a lot going on. They were able to plant plants and do all these really cool things. And I just, I really think that those kind of things are important for the communities, especially when we have these tight communities like Morgan Village and Gil Village and Heidi Cooper and things like that, where these kids might not be able to get out of those small areas very easily. So when we have these kind of things going on, it's really valuable for those children to be able to meet in the parks and be able to have some sort of overseer, not overseer, but like some sort of, um, person who is making sure that they're okay, making sure that they're fed, making sure that they're able to go somewhere safe for the day while their parents are working or things like that. I just think that these, um, these things that are put in place with parks program are just really important. When I was a kid, we had these kind of things down in Shady Brook and things like that, um, that I was able to attend, and I was able to actually go to crafts and things. They had these little buildings that were set up that they could open up, and there were college students, actually, that I think were, um, working in things. And we were able to go down there and find these crafts and play, and we were supervised. It was excellent. And it gave us something to do in the summer where we weren't going and being bad, honestly, uh, because there's a lot of opportunity to be bad as children. So I just think that it's an excellent, um, idea. I'm, I'm here for it. Uh, and I just think that we should have more things like that for children. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public comment. Uh, notice of executive sessions meeting.
And, um, for works there.
We have.
We have an executive session tonight at five thirty for the purpose in which to receive legal advice regarding various operational issues.
Uh, approval of minutes, March first, twenty twenty-three, public hearing minutes. Can I motion?
No move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh... Oh, uh, approval of minutes, March first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, communications?
Men.
Uh, managers report? Summer Parks Program, okay?
Uh, so Mark McGinty is here, and he is going to talk to council a little bit about, uh, last year's summer parks program, give council a little recap on that, and then also a little bit about what's going to be happening this year for the summer parks program. So, Mark?
Thank you, Blue. I appreciate that. Uh, well, last year, uh, we, uh, had a fantastic year for the summer park program. Uh, we did it at Heidi Cooper Park, um, coordinated with the YMCA and Creating Landscapes, uh, free lunches during the morning, uh, free snacks during the afternoon. Uh, we probably had about seventy-five kids that, uh, signed up, and, uh, the kids had a lot of playtime, uh, a lot of, uh, get-together time. Um, we had French Creek Conservancy come out, um, Mr. Marley came out and did art. We had all kind of programs, all kind of things for the kids to do. Um, and this year, uh, we are moving to Shady Brook, um, which I think is fantastic in itself as well. Uh, it's a beautiful park. Uh, we're going April first to do some cleanup with Allegheny. Um, and, uh, we're looking for transportation now, because the kids that came to Heidi Cooper this year need to be able to come to Heidi Cooper, uh, or need to come to Shady Brook this year, uh, that came to Heidi Cooper last year. So we're looking for transportation, but, uh, we're gonna be at Shady Brook this year. Uh, lots of fun and excitement. I'm supposed to read, uh, some things here. Creating Landscapes, the Meadville YMCA, and Women's Services Hope Outreach are collaborating to offer a safe, productive, and fun summer program, uh, playground program for the children of Meadville at no cost to the families. Uh, our vision is to once again see Meadville City Parks filled with children of all ages, playing, laughing, gardening, creating, uh, art, learning sports, and exploring nature within beautiful wooded trails and refreshing streams. Uh, last year, we did a, uh, a field trip to Goodell Gardens in Edinburgh. Uh, we're hoping to do something like that again this year and, uh, some other things. Um, hopefully, we will be back at the new Heidi Cooper Park next year, uh, for the summer program. And if funding, uh, if we can increase funding, um, hopefully, we will have more than one park as we did when we were kids and had parks. I think there were six different parks when I was a kid. Um, let's see. Walk-a-thon. There is a walk-a-thon that we're doing. Uh, most of you have probably heard about it. Uh, if you have not, it's to raise money for the summer parks program. Uh, we are convening, uh, here at the Diamond on, uh...
Actually, inside the Y, probably.
Inside the Y.
Because of the weather.
On Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday at two.
Sunday at two P.M. at the YMCA, because it'll be cold. And us Floridians can't live in the cold. So, uh, I'm very excited about this year. Uh, lots of kids, lots of fun, lots of laughter. Um, come down and do another interview, Mary. Um, but, uh, yeah, it was, uh, it was a great year. We're expecting a better year this year, um, as, you know, all things get better. So, uh, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, the reason you're moving is because of the construction, right? Otherwise, I mean, that's why we're, we're switching parks, or?
So there is construction.
I'm asking. I'm asking you, right?
If there is construction, which is scheduled, I'm, I've heard that there might be some construction scheduled. So yes, that is the reason why we're moving.
Don't get me in trouble, Mark. I just wasn't sure why, you know, because.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. Uh, hopefully, there will be construction starting, um, at Heidi Cooper this summer. Uh, so that would disrupt any, um, fun play. Uh, I mean, when I was a kid, we used to climb at the construction sites.
Right.
So, I mean, why couldn't we?
I, I was gonna say, they, uh, they brought my mind out.
So if we wanna volunteer on the first, what time, and what should we bring, like gloves?
Uh, it's from nine to twelve. Uh, and I believe the city will be there with a truck, uh, and some other equipment. Uh, but yeah, I would bring gloves and, uh, just a, a smile and, uh, ready to work.
Right on.
Um, I know that, uh, the creek needs to be cleaned out, and there's some stuff that we'll clean out there. Uh, we will probably paint the inside of the, um, the shack, uh, because we're gonna, uh, load that up with toys.
Uh, there's still room in the walk-a-thon? If people show up Sunday, they can participate?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, the walk-a-thon goes from March nineteenth until April... Something, yes. I believe that's it.
Twenty-eight days.
Um, and if you wanna join a team, you can contact me, um, or the YMCA, uh, to join a team. Um, if you wanna sponsor, by all means, by, by all means. If you wanna donate, by all means. Um, and in fact, it all goes to the kids.
And you're looking for transportation?
We are definitely looking for transportation, yes.
Suggestions, ideas, partnerships?
I, uh, I have a meeting with, uh, the pastor at New Beginnings Church tomorrow, uh, to, uh, try to use some of their, uh, their transportation that they have, so. I, uh, got, got my, my ears out, and I, I've asked a couple people, so we'll see.
Well, now you've got everybody in the room working on it, Mark.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll get you something, so we can get them kids there.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, it's, any other, anything else? Uh, council subcommittee reports, um, housing redevelopment, nothing as of yet, right? Uh, because we haven't, we haven't met yet. Uh, community engagement?
Uh, we haven't met either, but, uh, I put a bulletin board out in the front with some information, some calendars, all good stuff that's already public, but feels helpful to have it visible, uh, for people waiting for a meeting or something. Um, and working on an EMS open house, tentatively scheduled twelve to two, April fifteenth, to be confirmed. Um, and we'll send out around when it's construed, but, um, that'll probably penned, uh, that's probably pending a later conversation on this agenda, but, um, that'll be a chance for folks to, uh, to learn, to meet our fanatics, and, um, yeah, to see some of the exciting stuff on the fire department. Thanks for having me. You're helpful.
Right on. Uh, finance?
Uh, some research. Last week, I was down at Representative Roy's office. We talked about Act Ninety-One of twenty twenty. This is an act that enables the Office of the State Fire Commissioner to grant loans to career departments. Formerly, it was just for, uh, volunteer departments to purchase equipment. Uh, there are a lot of questions, so Rais' office did the research, and this is what we found so far. First, the referendum did pass seventy-three percent to twenty-seven percent in May of twenty twenty-one. Yes, the city of Meadville would be eligible to obtain a loan for its career fire department. The fixed rate would be two percent. That's lower than the current bond rates, which are somewhere around...
About three.
Three percent. Uh, if we were able to get a loan for the aerial apparat, this, it would be up to fifty percent of the cost, or three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, whichever is less. And you'll understand why I said if in a moment. The online application form is outdated. It still talks about volunteer departments. Hopefully, uh, this Rowey staff calling would get them to upgrade it to include career departments as it should be. At the present, the loan window is not open. Is that correct, Tim?
That's what the grant manager.
The grant manager said the loan window is not open. Um, and if it were, there's probably a question whether we could get it on this piece of equipment, because we already paid for it. Um, but it gives us an opportunity for future purchases. Uh, last night, there was a town hall. Representative Rowey, uh, held a town hall, and, uh, I asked him some questions about Medicaid reimbursements, both for nursing homes and EMS, because they are so, uh, insufficient that our county home is, our county care center is in danger of, uh, being sold or perhaps, uh, closed. And if we go ahead and have an EMS service in a couple of years, inflation will outstrip the reimbursement for Medicaid, and we'll, we'll have financial difficulty for that. Our finance director reached out to our pension manager, and she responded that, "As of yesterday, the events surrounding Silicon Bank, Signature Bank, and Republic Bank appear to have no direct material impact," those are her words, "to the city's pension funds." And I appreciate Tim watching out for the city's interest and being proactive. And finally, I emailed all of you a very rough draft of a spreadsheet to track actual costs and revenues for our city-owned ambulance service. Still revising that. I'd hope that the finance subcommittee would be able to discuss that at the next week's meeting, along with any of these other items. And that concludes my brief report.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Um, infrastructure?
Um, I guess our committee hasn't met, but I do just appreciate Marion and Nathan for taking a meeting with the citizen, with the, uh, proposal for a volunteer reburking pilot. We'll see how it goes, but I appreciate you all taking that meeting, and it's cool to see how people are interested in helping us.
On another issue, uh, Marion and Nate also responded to questions about the Grove Street Bridge. And the bottom line is that we could repair the bridge with interim repairs, somewhere around twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. It is, for lack of a better term, it is reasonably safe as it is. These twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars probably wouldn't do much more to make it any safer. And in fact, in one case, it would actually, uh, probably cause more problems for foot traffic. And so the real question is whether you wanna spend money on repairing something that may well be, uh, dismantled and rebuilt within a very few short years. Hopefully, a couple of years. That's hopefully.
Um, what, Marion, you, you had spoke with Nathan about the bridge. What was, well, what's the window for them? We, he said maybe in a couple of years, getting it replaced, which of course, we've been looking at that bridge, but what, what does that mean? What, what is that?
So it'd be a full replacement of the bridge. The cost of that, um, based on the bridge report that I've sent to the infrastructure, uh, committee, was upwards of almost a million dollars to replace the bridge fully. Uh, it has been repaired at this point, so it is considered to be safe. Our city engineer came and looked at the bridge, gave a couple of different options on that. Um, it's, there's some wall height issues, and some fixing to that is to put up, you know, six-foot screening wall. Uh, obviously, that's going to be not most visually appeasing method of repair, but also somewhat costly to do that. Um, so if the infrastructure committee wants to discuss that next week, a path moving forward, we could certainly do that.
Now, there should be some monies, or coming later, like in, in the country, right? Like, uh, soon.
There should be some infrastructure, federal infrastructure, money trickling down. What the restrictions are, we don't know yet on that, and how the money is to be used, but...
But hopefully, we're just, right? Um, thank you, Marion. I'm sorry.
That's me. Um, so this does lead to the question of next week. Next week is the traditional subcommittee meeting. Dates, does all, do all subcommittees want to meet, as we discussed last time, and kind of take turns throughout the meeting, touching on specific things? Or do you just want one subcommittee or two subcommittees to meet?
It sounds like we want finance to meet, right, Jim? To discuss, I think that that's...
Okay, yeah, because you probably have issues. You wanna discuss too, finance.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe infrastructure, right, to look at, at that and to, to discuss that? So definitely two. Um, yeah, why don't we all meet? And whether we have a two-minute meeting or a, do you know what I mean? Like, we can at least get our first meetings together and, and, um, work on stuff like that. So, yeah, I think, I mean, if, if that's okay, I don't...
Our fifteen minutes of fame.
Right, right. Thanks, Jim. Um, okay, I think that's good. Uh, old business. Ordinance, third and final reading, uh, designating primary, uh, primary provider of emergency medical and ambulance service ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, providing recognition of and designating the city of Meadville Fire Department EMS Division as the primary provider of emergency medical and ambulance services in the city of Meadville, providing for, among other provisions, the responsibilities of the designated primary provider, directions to dispatch services for definition, severability, and effective date, and repealer.
Can I motion? So moved. Second. Uh, discussion?
Uh, no changes since last meeting.
I do have a few more questions. Will we be billing the difference between the stated fee and insurance reimbursement?
Evan, do you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, so what we had initially looked at, and we've talked to our billing provider, um, is that we can do what's called soft billing, uh, which they recommended for city residents. Um, and that soft billing is that we are billing the insurance provider, whether it's commercial insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid, uh, and using that money that we get of that reimbursement as our fee coming in. And then, uh, decisions moving forward have to be made on how we'd wanna pursue anyone that's a non-city resident. Uh, we can do full-cycle billing on that, um, or we can continue with the soft billing, but the plan would be to, to do just the, the insurance reimbursement, and therefore, that's why I kind of eliminating the need for the, the membership fee that other services do, as we're out looking to cover fifty percent of the remaining. Uh, but our billing money coming in should cover that cost, is how we initially looked at it.
So by, I think you just answered my second question. By soft billing, are you saying that we will not be sending unresolved bills to collection?
That would be, um, my suggestion for city residents moving forward, uh, by having that service. But I think that's something, as we see what this is and look at the billing company, we can decide which direction we wanna go with that. Uh, yeah, as I say, you probably could speak more.
So that's also a policy decision of council on how you want to treat those. Everybody legally has to receive a bill, but what happens after that is a policy decision of council.
Um, will nine-one-one inform users that they have a choice of providers?
Tim?
Uh, the city has designated, um, the, uh, through, once this ordinance is passed, the city, the city would have designated the city provider as, um, the primary provider. And so according to local ordinance, nine-one-one should, um, call out the city first. If the city is unable to provide, uh, a response, the city should, the nine-one-one could then call other providers.
So in this particular case, Meadville ambulance would not be listed, or their name and number would not be given to someone who called. They'd have to hang up and dial their own provider's number. Is that correct? If I call, I, I need an ambulance, they're gonna send...
They're gonna send the city.
But if, if I don't know I have a preference, or if I know I have a preference, I'll have to go, and instead of going nine-one-one, I'll have to keep their number on speed dial and call them directly. Is that correct?
I would think yes. If you want the private Meadville Area Ambulance Service to show up, then you would have to call them directly.
Okay, thank you.
Settle, Jim?
That is it.
Okay, this is a question for Evan. If they, if there's somebody who calls, this is like a personal, I guess, and like, that's not like, it's, you know, the nine-one-one person determines it's not an emergency, let's say. But they just probably, you probably should go to emergency room and have that checked out. Like, how, what happens?
So when nine-one-one gets it, uh, if someone is requesting, uh, a medical problem with an ambulance, their policy is to dispatch. There's different priority levels, being emergency, ALS, BLS.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as that, they don't determine whether transportation is needed to or from the hospital. Uh, when someone calls nine-one-one for an emergency, they are being sent otherwise, uh, and then taken to the hospital. That is our, our job and our duty as providers within the state. Um, and as the nine-one-one center, they're there to dispatch the appropriate unit. So there's no, no designation made as far as, uh, if they need to go to the hospital or not, or what is, um, quote-unquote, an emergency or, or not an emergency.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Evan, for always being prepared for our questions. Um, okay, uh, roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Um, ordinance, third and final reading, uh, amending market house ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinances number eleven thirty-one of nineteen fourteen and number twenty-two thirteen of nineteen forty-eight is codified in Article nine hundred thirty-three of the Meadville Municipal Code to reflect the authority of the market authority to update references to the market manager and market house, to amend the regulations of the market house pertaining to rental schedule and payments, fee payment for outdoor farmer's market, deposit of sums collected, updating the manner of setting the schedule of regular market days, clarifying the removal of articles after closing, allowing the market manager to determine the width of stalls or spaces, updating penalties and deleting outdated provisions, and providing for renumbering as necessary, providing for an effective date, severability, and a repealer.
Um, motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
No updates since last reading.
Uh, Vogel?
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Um, ordinance, third and final reading, authorized cable franchise agreement with Armstrong Utilities, Inc.
Ordinance of the city of Meadville, authorizing execution of a cable franchise agreement between the city and Armstrong Utilities.
Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
No change.
Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, ordinance, third and final reading, extending Meadville Aerial Sewer Authorities Article of Incorporation.
In ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, approving the extension of the charm of the existence of the Meadville Area Sewer Authority for a term extension of fifty years from the date of approval of the Articles of Amendment, providing for severability, a repealer, and an effective date.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
There are just a couple minor, very minor changes, grammatical changes, um, to this that didn't affect any of the readings.
Does anybody have any other questions? Vogel?
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, new business. Discussion, motion, uh, reaffirming public comment policy.
Uh, so this is just to bring again to council's attention, the comment policy that I think was drafted, I don't know, early two-thousand-ish, I believe. Um, just to kind of reiterate, given the large number of public comments, uh, there's rules of order for the public comment. The public comment policy, um, is posted online, uh, for people to review, but just to reaffirm council's, um, willingness to go with the public comment policy.
Sure. Um... Does anybody have any questions? I, I am, you know, I'm good with it. Can I have a motion to reaffirm?
Excuse me, sorry. Do we have to do that? Because I guess...
Yeah, I, I just don't... Or just a discussion?
Or we just be reminded of this?
Just a reminder.
Oh, okay, so it's just a...
Just telling us, you don't want as much public comment. You just wanna throw anything there?
Okay, well, no.
Rules of public comment.
We've updated.
All right.
Excuse me, all right.
And it is easy to access on our website for people to see what the contact is. Okay.
It is.
It is, okay.
Behind the TV, is that true?
Yep.
Okay, so we can move it. We'll just move by that. You all right?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so, um, we'll move on. Motion to approve beautification, hold on, uh, discussion motion, beautification committee, twenty twenty-three, project request.
So included in your packet is the beautification committee's annual report. In the report, there are about six different items that the beautification committee is requesting council to take some sort of action on or to less. Um, we can go down those one by one if you'd like. The first is funding from council to continue with purchasing flags. So if you recall, they worked, I believe, at the Medical Center last year to do some flags along with decorative light poles. Um, they would like to continue to purchase flags. Peter is also here. He's the city liaison to beautification committee, if you have any specific questions for him. Um, but on the very last page of the beautification annual report... But on the very last page of the beautification annual report, there's a breakdown of how they got to the $3,000 for purchasing flags.
There was also mention, I think, in the report of, right, so the committee has fundraised. And they've fundraised, there's maybe enough in the account that they do, the trust that they administer, to cover the cost, so it wouldn't come out of general fund?
Correct.
Is, is the, is the reason that they're not able to pull that because the Eels Trust is so restricted? I guess I'm just looking for some clarity around why can't they use the money that they fundraised to?
So my understanding is that they need council's blessing to pull that money out of the Eels Trust?
So they're asking for the money from there?
Correct.
So, but it, it says, uh, the committee is requesting $3,000 from general fund or from the Emmeline D. Barco Beautification Fund, which I don't even alter, and then, uh, subnote, alternatively, committee requests $3,000 to be released from that which the committee has fundraised and deposited in the Eels Fund since 2019. So can we, like, so they're looking for us to approve that money be released?
Yes.
Okay.
So my understanding, how the financing is, the beautification committee does not have control directly over the account. What they did is submitted the cash or the checks that they fundraised to finance, which then deposited it into Eels. So to use it, again, they need to request council and finance to get it out of the trust.
The, the way that the request is written here is kind of confusing, right? It's, it's requesting that it come from the general fund or the Barco Beautification Fund. Alternatively, it could come from money that they fundraised. Is there, do you know if there's like priority, like they would like it to come, they're asking for it to come from this fund? And if not, on these other ones?
So my understanding is that they began their fundraising before any of the, uh, plans were solidified for purchasing flags. So there was not necessarily that target set. But their fundraising has reached the $3,000 and a little bit changed, that they were then quoted for the flags. So had council's option. They can request that they use the money that they fundraised, but then they wouldn't have the $3,000 they fundraised for other discretionary projects for council's object. You could release funds elsewhere. In any case, they've raised the money that could cover the project, or we could just bank that for future discretionary projects. So it's, you know, money's fungible. It's going to go to beautification, so.
I, I, I would, I would say that we release it from the Eels Trust, let them keep fundraising, or come back with another specific ask. That would be my, yeah.
Again, they're asking from three different funds. Right, the Barco Beautification Fund?
Seems like they'll take it wherever they get it.
Or, so, or what they've fundraised, right, for the Eels. Is, is that right? Like, there, there's not two, there's three different funds they're asking from?
Uh, there's.
Sources.
There's three sources of funds. They're allowing council to determine which source.
Source, okay.
So, uh, was yours a motion to release from the Eels?
Sure, yeah, I'll move to release the $3,000 from the Eels Trust for purchase of these flags. By beautification.
Okay. I'll second. Discussion?
I have a, a question, and maybe jurisdiction. So is the beautification committee responsible for trimming trees downtown?
Shade tree commission.
Shade tree commission is responsible for that. Because there were some trees that, uh, have branches right about head height or eye height for average people, and, uh...
I was going to say, Jim, that's right above my head. I'm Jake's spot.
I am fine, it is fine.
Well, let's put it, if you're over five foot six.
Yes, and I am nowhere near that.
It's, uh, it can be an issue.
That would be the shade tree commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Uh, Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
And then, well, sorry, were there, there's other?
There were five other ones.
Oh, okay. On the money.
That was the only one that had to do with money.
Okay.
The next is, concurring with the committee pursuing weight-finding signage. So this is, these are those decorative signs that you see that kind of point you in directions for various shops and restaurants and things like that. They are looking to see what kind of pricing they can get on those. I know that Victoria has been working a little bit with PennDOT on that. So they're just asking for, concurring to continue to do that.
That's great, yeah.
Uh, the next one is, concurring with the committee commencing a green space, green space initiative. Uh, so these are, would be green spaces owned by the city, which require more attention than public works can allot at this point. There's about 20 different locations. And the committee would go ask businesses and organizations to help commit to adopting one of those spaces.
Great idea. And that just would mean maintenance of the space?
Whatever the business organization would like to do. So it could involve grass planting, or shrub planting, flower planting, whatever the business would like to do.
Beautifying the space, I'm telling you. For public use.
I hate to be the one to ask, like, liability, like, are they, are, do we hold that? Are we going to ask for some proof of insurance?
So my recommendation is that if you were to have just general flowers and such, I'm not concerned about it. If there's going to be any physical alteration of the property that is owned by the city, that council should approve any plans for that alteration. And then that would come with a discussion of liability related to that. Flowers, basic shrubs, you can delegate that authority to the beautification committee to approve, if you'd like.
But you're talking like flower beds and steps and?
We're going to do beds and steps and retaining walls, something that people can trip on. Anytime anybody is going to physically alter the property that is owned by the city, you should have that final approval before they go out and do that.
Okay, so we can say yes, physical alterations should, should come before council or?
So I'll use the example, um, Carney Formal's, uh, last year adopted some of the, the medians by, on this alley down here by Erie Bank, and just kind of pulled weeds and mulched. Those, I think, are the kinds of things that the beautification committee would be asking of folks.
That sounds good. I don't discourage anyone from putting in retaining walls or something, but just, you know, we should be smart about that.
Uh, the next one, concurring with the committee looking into downtown lighting. So the committee was requested to look into ambiance lighting in Diamond Park. The committee has considered the request and are recommending against the lighting in the park, but pivot towards respectful upgrade lighting on statues and trees. So again, this is just council giving the blessing to the committee to explore those options.
People looking at that.
Uh, concurring with the committee moving forward with selecting a Homer A. Thornton Award winner. So apparently, this has been something that has been done previously, I think. There will be, according to the beautification committee, three awards given each year, spring and a fall for residential properties, and a summer award for commercial properties. There's a basic application that the beautification committee has put together, and they would like to kind of explore getting the cost of those awards, things like that.
That's great.
The last item is actually a little bit further down on the list in this, well, it's the next item, I believe. Point in the beautification committee's slate for 2023.
Sorry, you said it's down?
It's the next item.
On the list itself.
Discussion, motion, beautification.
Gotcha. Um, they had also included in here a request to, uh, reduce the number of seats that they would need to fill?
So, or?
Is there a range, is in beautification, or?
It's up to 10.
Okay.
Um, they had in 20 earlier, 2020, 2021 perhaps, requested that the, that 10 be reduced to eight. And from my understanding, council had been okay with that. So there's five positions that they're looking to reappoint tonight, and then three additional slots open. And those three additional slots, then we would advertise and then do the interview process.
That makes sense, I think I was reading that. So they're, they're asking that we fill these remaining three?
Correct.
Advertising.
Yes.
If you're ready for a motion, I would so move.
What's, what?
To point the slate.
Point.
Oh, point the slate. Did you do that already this year?
No.
Okay. Second. Discussion?
Are we on a order, like?
No.
I don't, oh, we'll just. No, it's, um, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
We've just moved on.
We did the, yeah, and then the?
You're on C, and I'm C, you're good.
Uh, roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
I just, uh, thanks to beautification committee for putting that together. I think, yeah, I have appreciated these annual reports from Victorius.
Okay, uh, discussion, council travel requests.
So, moving forward, I, it's been determined to be best practice that council approves other council members' travel requests as a body. Uh, I approve all city staff travel requests. The feeling was that it should be a very similar situation with council. Um, so included in your packet is just the very basic travel request form.
And this is the same one that the, the?
Staff?
Staff, correct. Sorry, I, I could not recall staff.
So it's approved, for a staff, it's approved by myself, the finance director, and the department head. This obviously would just be approved by council as a body. But very similar, it has lodging, meals, allowance, auto allowance, any airfare, parking tolls, anything like that, anticipated costs. And just wanted to make sure that this policy was okay with council, kind of moving forward to go into this best practice.
So the policy being that we would fill out this form, get it to staff to be included in the council packet?
Correct.
Uh, on the agenda for approval?
Correct, yes.
With a certain, sorry, with certain lead time or anything, like, do, do we stipulate?
I mean, as soon as you can get it to staff?
Before money's expended, I guess?
Correct.
Sorry, yeah.
Council members receive a gasoline allowance.
Tim?
They do, that's the auto allowance per month, yes.
So, this would be duplicative?
Well, not if there's more that we're doing. Right, if, if we're, you know, pelraz, right, those type of things.
I guess my other question would be, and you can handle on a case-by-case basis, but we have a million-dollar deficit coming up for 2024. And I guess I'd be really interested in the need to attend many of these events if there is a valid, discernible?
Sure.
Tangible benefit being conferred upon the city.
Jim, I hear the point that you're making, and I think that that's appropriate to consider as the requests come in. I think having the policy is probably good, because otherwise, we've got a line item in the budget for our travel, and we're just doing, right now, we don't have to ask each other. So probably, it's, it's sounding like it's in keeping, I think, with what you're putting forward to, to bring it to one another before any money is spent. Because we do have that line item?
Yeah.
In the budget. And it's also not duplicative if you don't take the $200 gas allowance.
Right. But if you do take the $200 gas allowance, I think that would need to be considered.
Sure.
So what are we asking for tonight?
If this is best practice, if this is what we want to do, right? Well, it was just discussion, was it not?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just discussing, discuss, discussion, uh, council travel requests. And, and using the same thing that staff uses. Okay, discussion, motion, National League of Cities.
Sorry, um?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, can, 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 can we have, like, whatever the policy that we just verbally communicated, like, written and sent around?
Sure. Because we have to, we'll still have to, like, vote on it, right? Or, or is that, oh, you needed was a consensus, that this is what we're going to do, and that's what we're?
Well, it depends how far council wants to take it. It's the first time it's come up to council. So if council wants to see a written policy that's easily enough provided, stating that prior to any travel being approved, council, council members will have to submit the form. It'll be have to be reviewed and approved by council as a whole, authorizing that travel. That can be reduced to writing.
I would like to see a written policy.
Yeah.
And then in that spirit, I believe that there is a request for travel that is the next item that is on the agenda. So that, that policy you will see for official approval at the next meeting. But now we have a request as well.
Sure. Motion, discussion, National League of Cities.
So as Tim said, this leads to the National League of Cities. Um, there's been interest expressed by at least one council member to attend this. This is in Washington, DC. So the question before council would be if you wanted to send somebody to the National League of Cities conference.
Marion, can you give a little background on that, right? You, you know the National League of Cities, you're, you're attending, right? So if you could, uh, so that people understand.
Uh, so this is a conference held at various cities across the country each year. Different municipal leaders getting together to discuss various topics. I have to refresh myself on what is on the agenda for this year. Uh, but it's, it's, uh, it's a city conference, so you can deal with others who experience very similar situations to, you know, city of Meadville.
Right, and I, I think if I'm not mistaken, uh, it has a lot to do with the, this year, the infrastructure, the law that just came out, and how to get monies for that, correct? I'm just, um, so, and it's a learning experience for city leaders to get together with one another, uh, whether it be staff or elected officials, uh, and then to talk to national legislators?
Correct, yes.
And nonprofits and, and, uh, that type of thing, so. So I'm sorry to put join as well, Mary.
Have you gone before?
No.
Okay.
So it's something that to?
We are not members of the League of Cities at this point, are we?
We are.
We have, we have rejoined?
We have rejoined.
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
I just did the calculation, and it's about $380 in mileage, I think, from here to DC, just in case that is helpful. And I think our budget line item is 850 for, for, that we adopted for 2023 for council travel. I move to approve this travel request.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I move to approve the travel request. Can I have a second?
Okay, can we just discuss real quick? Because, so, um, the person going, did they make it for?
Let's get the second, and then you go into discussion.
Oh, okay, 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 I'll, I second. Great.
Discussion now, now.
Now we can just go, thank you.
Um, the, the form, uh, I think the ordinance will be, uh, once we get the policy, will be?
The form, the forms associated with the policy that you'll see at the next council meeting.
Correct.
So first, we want to discuss how we're going to handle it. Now, you have, you also have a request for travel.
Great, okay, yeah.
Right now, so the request that's before us is that particular attendance at the National League of Cities conference.
We would ask that anytime right before you go to a conference or the money is expended, that the form be filled out. This happens to occur prior to the next council meeting, so that won't be an option for council to review.
Got it. So we're looking, I guess, just to try and piece together as much as possible for the travel request?
Right.
$380 round trip in mileage, or, I just took a train last week to DC, it was like 60 bucks that way, so that's cheaper. I was on Pittsburgh, not bad. Though you don't have Wi-Fi, and you'll have to call in to a meeting like five times.
Train.
Not going to DC from Pittsburgh. Um, but, but any, but anyway, so, so maybe 150 for a train, or 380 for auto, um?
Lodging.
Are there lodging, is it several nights?
It's two, two nights, yeah.
Two nights of lodging? Two nights of lodging?
And we, and we are members, so.
So registration.
Yeah.
I'm concerned with the tangible benefit. How is the city going to benefit? And again, under our former government, we are a council manager former government. There's a major difference between having us attend and having our professional staff attend. Because they're the ones involved in day-to-day operations. We're not a strong mayor former government, I hear, where people might have a department. So I, I don't really see, in this particular case, I do happen to have the, uh, agenda for the League of Cities meeting. I don't really see anything that's going to produce any foreseeable benefit in now or in the reasonably distant future.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I don't know, I just went to a conference a week ago for, um, local electeds and it was really, really helpful, like, uh, learned about the Inflation Reduction Act means I, that we can just, I think that we can just get money from the IRS for some of the clean energy projects that we're talking about, like, it's not competitive. I mean, there, there's a lot of learning to be done and I, I, I do, I think that there's, there's value in this connecting across. I think some, is some staff considering good?
I am.
Yeah, so, it's good, it's great. We'll have staff. There is one.
Is the, is the, um, the, I don't know, the agenda for the meeting, is it, Jim, is it like several rooms? Is it just one room?
Well, the agenda is several pages long.
Oh, there it goes, okay.
I think, I think it's five. Um, and I think we spent 500 of our 800. It was, I was looking at our 2023 budget and projected expenditure for 2022 was about $500 for, um, council travel. So it's unprecedented that we tap into, um, our travel budget. This might put us a little over that 500, but not by much.
Um, obviously, I, I believe that it is good to make connections, to learn, to, to, um, and to figure out new ways to get together, come together and, uh, be able to work to, to, figure out new ways for revenue, figure out, you know, how to apply for monies, to, to learn those things. So I, I believe in networking and connecting, so, um.
Yeah, well, I think that'd be good, like, if someone from council and, I think, just having that rapport between Mary there's, there's a good outcome there.
All right, uh, roll call.
Uh, Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Ordinance first and final reading, PennBest loan guarantee?
Uh, an ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, determining to incur lease rental debt evidence by the two guaranteed revenue notes. Uh, note 77,107 in the amount of 413,950 dollars and note 71,457 in the amount of 11,459,442 dollars. The PennBest notes to be authorized and issued by Meadville Area Sewer Authority in connection with the construction alterations and improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and sewer facilities located in and about the city of Meadville and paying for the cost of issuance, therefore specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city of Meadville to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including guarantee agreements between the city of Meadville as guarantor and the Meadville Area Sewer Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority through which the city of Meadville shall guarantee 68.75% of the amount of the PennBest notes in a maximum guaranteed amount of $8,162,957, approving the form, maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement and pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city of Meadville and support thereof, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations and appointing a sinking, sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all consistent, inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Oh, I said discussion, Jimmy.
Did you say discussion?
Yeah.
Westmead, do they have, are they guaranteeing any?
They are, so the city of Meadville's guaranteeing 68.75% of the debt and Westmead's guaranteeing the remainder. That's a calculation that was put together by PennBest. Uh, I don't know if, how exactly they came up with those percentages, but those are percentages they came up with.
And, uh, implications for residents in the updates to the sewer system in general? What, what would residents expect to see, or how would they be impacted?
I don't think they're impacted too much because from what I understand, when we went to that meeting, and I, I don't know, I, you know, I'm not an expert on that, but they, they said that it wouldn't, like, shut down, they can shut down, like, one piece, upgraded, shut down another piece, upgraded, and that's, that's how they keep going. Now, you need an expert here from there.
You've attended most of them, so do you have any?
Are you talking about the impact on rates?
On like the residents?
Or on impact on what happens?
I'm asking at large the impact, um.
The impact?
Oh, oh.
Overall, they probably won't see any difference. Obviously, they're going to keep the plant running throughout the whole construction.
Services will continue.
Yep.
We just have a newer system.
Exactly, they're going to take the old system and just upgrade it.
And you brought up rates, is there an expectation of?
Well, you probably have seen over the last couple of years, we've raised rates, I believe it was 6% a year ago and I think it was 5% this year. And we did, obviously with the study, we had to go out to 2055 and project rates out. And we're looking maybe at a couple more 3% increases and then after that, you're not looking at too much more.
Between now and 2055?
Huge difference that we got a $16 million grant from the state.
Sure.
That was a huge difference in the rates. So most of the rate structure that's been increased has already been increased. And so you won't see that much more in the future.
So we're not anticipating any, uh, yeah, maybe less of a rate increase than if we had to foot the bill for?
Oh, we had another $16 million, yes, absolutely. Absolutely, that would have been a huge increase, so, uh, that was, uh, very positive, obviously. And this is what's known as lease rental debt or excluded debt. So, and you're, under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, which is the state law that, that limits the, well, there's a Pennsylvania constitutional provision which limits the amount of debt that a municipality can get into. The Local Government Unit Debt Act is the act that implements that, which is why we go through these processes, go out and get DCED approvals and such, so they can track each municipality's debt. This is debt that is lease rental debt, meaning that the rates from the sewer users are going to be able to pay it off. So we're not using tax dollars to do so. So this debt does not impact our debt limit, it's known as excluded debt. So it's not going to impact the ability for us to raise in the future. And it's not our debt, we're just guaranteeing it, but because you're guaranteeing it, it, it has to be included in those calculations.
Impact our bond rating?
Should not affect us in a negative fashion because it's not going to impact our, our limitations, um, our, our debt limits. And, um, quite frankly, I mean, look, looking at the debt portfolio that you have, we're, we're in pretty good shape for a city this size, I think.
Obviously, when we have conversations with the, the bond people, they, they do want to see the underlying, um, mass of revenues. So they obviously look at the audit reports and then what status that Massa is in.
But this debt itself should not negatively impact us.
No, no, it never.
Operations of mass are a part of that, but.
And that's probably why I said to our solicitors, like, we are really, I want to look at the operating agreements since we're going to guarantee this debt to 2055, to maybe modify a few words in that document to make sure that, uh, the Massa has a good operating board, et cetera.
So the Articles of Incorporation that you had just approved needed to be approved, the extension, because we need to make sure they have a life long enough to pay the debt off. And that's what just occurred there. Once you approve this, what will happen is it gets filed with the Department of Community and Economic Development, they'll look at it, will have approvals, it'll march Massa down to the point where they can actually get a closing. Prior to that closing occurring, I'm anticipating at your next meeting, you're going to be looking at a, uh, draft of amendments to that Articles of, of, excuse me, the Management and Operation Agreement to firm up what it is that you need. And they will not be able to close on that debt until such time that they have a Management and Operation Agreement that extends beyond the debt of, the, the date of the debt. So they're all, they're all working hand in hand.
What is that sinking fund, what does that mean?
It merely means that there's an account that is available so that if we had to pay the debt off, that we have an account to drop it into, to sink the money into, at which point then it would go out to pay off the debt. This is the easiest way I can explain it.
That's pretty good.
Um, does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
Uh, Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution, authorized signature license agreement with the ARC?
A resolution of the city, a resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a license agreement for the temporary relocation of solar tables at the city's mill-run parking lot from March 15th through December 31st between the city of Meadville and La Ark of Crawford County.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, where, where are these tables going to go? Like, are they, are they going to go?
Parklit? Is it that parklit?
Okay. Are they on the floor?
Probably, probably it was in red.
Oh, that's why it's in red, I cannot.
Jim? I, you know what?
It's a special tree.
I just thought it was a, uh. Like, I was worried that, so it's going to go in this, this, this space here. Clear, there's, they're not going to go in that, the bushy area there, obviously.
Yeah.
And they're not going to block any parking spots.
Correct.
Just like a picnic table there, a wooden one, I think that we have.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're like a picnic table. The ARC will move the picnic table into their storage and place it with this one.
We could put it anywhere, I, I use telemark, I think those tables are just awesome. They're the coolest things, you see people at them eating, charging their phones. For this summer, people can charge their phones and use the wifi in that little city park. Fantastic, great, yeah. While this construction is going on, that's, that's.
Correct, yes. Any other questions? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution, authorized signature, Summer Parks Program Agreement, City of Meadville, Meadville YMCA and Creating Landscapes.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a Summer Parks Program Agreement between the city of Meadville and Meadville YMCA and a Summer Parks Program Agreement between the city of Meadville and Creating Landscapes.
Second. Discussion?
So very similar to the agreements the council entered into last year with the YMCA, Creating Landscapes. As Mark pointed out, uh, the program will be moved to Shady Brook this year. Um, he went over kind of the dates and everything with that for you.
Same insurances, same everything?
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Uh, resolution, authorized submission, DCNR, Community Conservative Partnership Program for Fifth Ward Park Master Site Plan.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program for the Fifth Ward Park Master Site Plan.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, so if council recalls, we have submitted over the past couple of years to DCNR for various park upgrades. We would like to focus this year on the Fifth Ward site, but doing a master plan instead of anything with infrastructure. We anticipate the total cost of the project to be between 80 and $100,000. So DCNR is a 50/50 match. This means that the city's contribution would be somewhere between 40 and $50,000. We are exploring the use of CDVG funds, um, in order to help pay for that match.
That would, that's part of the question I had. CDVG funds and DCNR, is floodplain an issue?
We're exploring that, since this is for planning, instead of any infrastructure, it is possible to use CDVG funds, we believe, um, but we're getting a confirmation from our CDVG grant manager on that.
Okay, and will the proposed new zoning ordinance affect that land use or maybe expand that possible land use?
I was going to say.
Uh, it, it really should not.
Um, do we have any other questions on that?
We're talking, uh, are, are we talking beyond the Lincoln Avenue Park or just the?
Just the Lincoln Avenue Park.
Okay, yeah, so it's already there too. We connected with Hope Initiative?
Not at this time, yeah.
Uh, is it a cash match?
It is.
It could maybe, aye. That's certainly in the planning process, I think it'd be a valuable part here.
Name me rights.
So this is that little park, right, not the big park with the ball field?
The one that has the dinosaur.
Correct. Thank you, that's what I just needed to make sure it was. The ball fields, the ball field are not. That's a thought that I must say, I better just, yes, yes, okay.
Ball fields are actually burning township.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, because that's a, a big park and people sometimes use those. Yeah, that.
As soon as she says, purple dinosaur. It's just right there when you drive by. And it's older than I am, I'm sure.
Great, okay. And we'll, with the, with the master site plan now, we'll get to see what they're going to do with the park and spend that money on?
It'll be very similar to what happened with Heidi Cooper. Um, so we'll solicit input from the public on what they would like to see. Obviously, this is much smaller space than Heidi Cooper. Um, but we will get input from the public and then a budget will be built off of that kind of master plan.
Um, the Hope, it's my understanding, the Hope Initiative in the Fifth Board, which I know the city staff has, has visited, um, some of their events, but I think that they've, like, formalized a resident council, so there is, like, representative, you know, like neighborhood leadership, which I think could be helpful in organizing some of those events, um, getting it worked out to neighbors and getting input.
And I feel like even in that area, was it Catta that wanted to put a show, a stand? Is it right in that, that same area?
Yes.
That would be really cool, like to have it all, you know, sorry. Um, oh, okay, roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Um, resolution, authorized submission, Act 13, At-Risk Bridge Grant Program, Clinton Court?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing submission of a grant application to the Crawford County Act 13, At-Risk, uh, Bridge Grant Program.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Councilor called that the city in 2021 received $68,950 in Act 13 money for Clinton Court. This was to help, to help offset the costs at the time, which we thought would be $137,900. Since that time, our city engineer has revisited the Clinton Court Bridge, gone underneath, looked at it, determined that it is in much worse condition than we anticipated prior. So we will need to, um, apply for some additional funds to that. Act 13 is a 50% match, uh, fifth, a one-to-one match. So we'd be asking for $48,175 in Act 13 money, matching that with our own $48,175, um, and then adding that to what we had previously received and set aside. Um, in 2012, the capital borrowing from that allocated $150,000 in capital borrowing towards Clinton Court and another bridge, do you remember that was?
I can't remember the other bridge.
It's, it's off of Liberty Street, that repair has already been done.
So we already borrowed for the bridge?
That's correct.
But we haven't used that money?
We have $141,000-ish left in capital borrowing.
Um, does anybody have any other?
Um, does anybody have any other questions?
This is, this is near the Ark Green Space Site?
That's correct.
It's not physical bridge.
Yeah, it's just, it is. Correct, correct. Mill Run is obviously in Meadville.
I think the Green Space is right on top of it.
That's what I was worried on the, so it, I mean.
So we should be calling Green Space.
It's like cement space.
It's green eye.
Uh, so.
Great.
If they're doing construction on that this year, are we trying to coincide with that? Are we trying to do it all at the same time? Are we gonna rip all that up and, and, do you know what I mean? When we, we do this bridge, this is just a question?
It, it likely will not happen at the same time. Ideally, it would, um, but we likely won't have the additional Act thirteen funds in time for it to coordinate with their construction project.
Will there be any duplication of costs?
There should not.
We tear up their stuff and then?
Yeah, will it impact there?
It, it really should not, no.
Anybody have any other questions?
Um, I will just also note that if, if the concern is with the Green Space, Ashley Porter from our city engineer is also heavily involved in the Ark Green Space project, and so he has done his own evaluation on their section of the culvert that runs under the Green Space.
So we at least have someone working on both things that can be like a liaison between and help.
So what's in front of us now is authorizing submission of this grant application. If we got it, then we would need to be prepared to expend the correct matching funds.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
We never know how much time to waste when I say roll, we mean to get discussion.
Any other questions?
Sometimes I jump in.
It's very.
It's very interesting. Everybody does it.
Uh, okay. Resolution Temporary License Agreement, City of Meadville and Channelock.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a Temporary License Agreement for the use of right-of-way on South Cottage Street to conduct repairs to gas lines owned by Channelock between the City of Meadville and Channelock.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, Channelock needs to conduct some repairs to Channelock-owned gas lines. Uh, because of this, Channelock will need to regranted access to the city right-of-way. This is between a portion of South Cottage, between their building and Merrill Alley. It's noted in your map as part of the exhibit A. It's a small section. Should not take terribly long to do their repairs.
Nobody even knows it's a street. You think it's part of Park.
That's correct.
That, well, that, that was my next question. What is it gonna hinder for, for Meadville? You didn't mean in their construction, so, okay. That, I think, is, um. Uh, anybody have any questions?
Does that, does Public Works use that now?
Any other questions? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Um, public comment on non-agenda items? We don't have any here.
I got something. Is that all right?
Yeah. I mean, you didn't sign up, Mike. You just went over, you just went over public comments. The procedure, but, yeah.
Most of you do, most of you do a jerk. Up, you just waited seven seconds.
Uh, my name is Mike Crowley. I'm a resident of the city. I live on DeBoer Drive. Uh, I'm addressing council tonight because tomorrow is March sixteenth. March sixteenth, as I'm sure everyone is aware, is James Madison's birthday. Uh, every year, uh, the Pennsylvania News Media Association, uh, uses the week of Madison's birthday to celebrate Sunshine Week. Uh, Sunshine Week is a Mardi Gras-like celebration of transparency in government. And, uh.
Sorry, Mike.
Uh, I don't really have any complaints about transparency, uh, in government with regard to city council. Uh, the elected officials are really, uh, accessible. The staff members are also very accessible and reliable and get back to me on time. Uh, I do, however, um, like to make an annual, um, effort to remind agencies like yours regarding executive sessions. Uh, executive sessions are kinda like, uh, uh, an opportunity for government agencies to keep things secret, and, uh, we live in a, in a country where people don't trust government agencies, uh, and, and are suspicious of government agencies keeping things secret. So, uh, it's useful to try to keep a check on that, and, uh, and so when I hear government agencies, for instance, I was at a public meeting earlier this week where a government agency, uh, got to the end of their meeting and said, "We had an executive session, uh, in which we discussed, uh, personnel litigation and something else." Like, they said it so fast, I don't know what the other thing was. I have to go back and, and listen to it again and see what it was. So that's a bad idea. It's not a best practice. And they had also just hired a new lawyer who told me afterwards, he drew a distinction between what the law requires and what a best practice would be. And, uh, and of course, the law allows agencies like yours to, to, to voice virtually all the things that might be covered in an executive session. Like, you can keep it secret, but, but you don't have to. Which, uh, which reminds me of what we heard earlier tonight here, which was that, uh, city council held a, an executive session.
Sorry, Mike, I gotta.
By thirty today, uh, at, uh, held an executive session today to receive legal advice regarding, quote, "various operational issues," unquote. Uh, so, uh, state case law says that, uh, one-word explanations of executive session meetings like personnel or litigation or real estate are not legally sufficient. This would be an example of more than one word being kind of not very transparent at all. Legal advice regarding, quote, "various operational issues"? What does that mean? Is that like an effort at transparency? Because I don't think anybody understands, uh, or really gets much, uh, much that's meaningful from an explanation that says, uh, "we talked about various operational issues." And that's like saying, "We talked about stuff, and we're not gonna tell you what that stuff was." But like I said, I don't really have any complaints. I just thought that was funny. Uh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure sarcasm is a rhetorical strategy.
Right, right. Thanks, Mike.
That's what I got.
By the way, uh, we just went over our, our public comment policy, and you were over. Just letting you know that we were so happy to hear you speak. We let you go over.
Which kinda demonstrates that there was, would've been no harm in saying that, uh, and the, uh, I tend to think that the usual explanation why it doesn't get said is that people are just lazy and, and wanna be quick about it. But, uh, it, like, the effort would be worth it.
Explaining executive sessions is what, that's what you're, I, I, I do. Thank you, Mike. Now it is Councilmember's session. Uh, I betcha.
Well, I think we should hold an executive session.
Should we talk about Mike?
But we're, it's about how to be more transparent about our executive sessions.
Right, right.
I guess I would just like to really thank the, um, Public Works guys for, at whatever time in the morning when I heard the snowplows go by, 'cause that was, uh, just a really surprise, um, snowstorm, so it was a great thing. We have the Judas Jig coming up, and we have the parade this Saturday. Hopefully, it'll be freezing cold as is tradition. So those are two great things, so, you know, it's not a parade. A St. Patrick's Day parade, we don't know when we go. So, and that's it.
Don't think you'll miss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, council members received an email from, uh, Michelle Brooks', administrative assistant, letting us know about public comment on the twelve-year transportation plan, and they provided a website. Only problem is I tried accessing it twice and it.
Yes, you have to take the period off the end of the link. So it's the end of the sentence, you have to take the period off, and then it works again. There's a whole way.
But I would also recommend that maybe we put that on our website, so, because it, it's important. Whether it's a street or a bridge, we need to get public feedback instead of after the fact saying, "I wish we would've done something."
No, that's a good idea. Thanks, Jeff.
Nothing further.
Um, yeah, I agree with that, uh, with what Jen, uh, had shared. We've requi-, uh, uh, we, we were, we requested time, uh, before some of the meetings that we have with Tim, 'cause otherwise we don't have, um, direct access to our solicitor, so we've requested time to, to sit with him, I think, today. Uh, we talked about travel policy, we talked about agendas, um, what, what, what it actually needs to move around agenda and what's, um.
Since you disclosed it, strangely enough, we discussed how to apply the sunshine law.
We did, we did. That is.
Receiving legal advice, attorney-client privilege conversations regarding how to comply with the sunshine law in spirit of your anticipated.
Yeah.
That is right. That is right. So we have. We've only got a, a small, uh, a, a small window when we can, uh, directly consult our, our solicitor, so that's, that is what we talked about. Uh, so thanks for that reminder, Mike, and, um, and discussed, uh, just a lot of right-to-know for us, we're getting at the city. So, uh, discuss the, the volume of work that that entails. Um, and, uh, yeah, uh, I mentioned the EMS down hall coming up. Again, that's, that's, uh, tenured, but hoping to, to bring that down. Um, we'll put out a press release and make sure that public knows about that. I think that'll be really exciting. Uh, more to come on that. Um, there, uh, what is? I don't remember. Um, and I, I will not be, uh, present for our next regularly scheduled council meeting on the Fifth. Just letting, just letting folks know a bit. And, uh, thanks, folks for coming. Thanks, Evan. I know you've been doing a lot of work getting, getting stuff ready for, uh, responding to, to folks when, when the time comes, if you will, so, thank you.
And, uh, so, uh, yeah, Mike, I did wanna just touch on what, what Autumn said about our executive sessions. That's something that we feel is needed so that we don't have to spend tons of money, right, talking to Tim, uh, tons. So we, we have a small window that we, we like to ask him questions ourselves, uh, so that, uh, and, and, again, for full disclosure of, of being transparent, um, with, with those type of things, right? Um, I did want to first say it is still light out, so that's pretty exciting to me, and, and we're getting almost seven-thirty, so. Um, it was pretty distracting looking out the window and seeing light still, so I'm excited about that. I'm excited about, uh, St. Patrick's Day and the parade and, um, uh, how awesome the people are that are going to Grand Leprechaun, and they are, um, fundraising and doing all of this cool stuff, right? Uh, that's exciting. Um, I also wanted to put a plea out to council, to people in this room, and to anybody watching, that if, if we do see, and I, and we have heard of some businesses that are, are struggling and, and some, some things like that. I, I encourage you, when you hear that there's business struggling, that you hear that something like that is happening in Meadville, that we rally around them, and we try to purchase from them, eat there, you know, um, instead of just, uh, kind of spreading the rumor and, and avoiding them, we make a point to rally and spend our money there because, um, we want the places here that are here. We want them to do well, um, and we want them to succeed, so, uh, I've heard a couple of things about, you know, a couple, more than one business closing because they're not, you know, or they're, they're having a tough time, and, uh, instead of us spreading that and, and kind of staying away from them, I think that we should make a point, uh, to spend the little bit of money that we have. Um, and if you're like me, it's very little, but we can, we can do that in a, um, in a real focused way, um, do that deliberately, so, um, I, I did wanna mention that and, uh, tell everybody to come out, even if it is freezing on Saturday, and enjoy the shops. They're all gonna be open. And, um, again, thank Evan for all the work that you and, and the fire department and our new, you know, EMS service is doing, and appreciate all of the questions that you get, and, uh, with that, I think we can, uh, I can move to adjourn?
To executive session.
To executive session.
To discuss personnel.
You discuss personnel.
It'll be very quick.
Are you moving?
I'm moving.
I'll second.
Oh, oh, can you move? No, no, I, can I have a motion?
Okay, I'll move.
Sorry. Uh, and, um, all right. Discussion?
Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.